... to the January Board of Education meeting. Ms. Reed, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner?
Here.
Mrs. McAvina is absent. Mrs. ElPascar?
Here.
Mr. Sherbin is absent. Mr. Stobie?
Here. I know Mr. Sherbin will be here in a few minutes. But can we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. We have a couple of special presentations to start tonight's meeting, and our first is our folks from Mighty Goliath. Come on up.
Good evening. First off, thank you so much for allowing us to come and talk to you. My name is Kathy Coons, and I'm the current president of the Board of Directors for Mighty Goliath Productions. If anyone is not familiar with us, we've been around, this is our 66th production. We put on one show a year in the Performing Arts Center. The whole company is 100% volunteer, not a single person gets paid a single penny to help out. And since 1966, I'm sorry, I had to write this down, we have donated $335,316.57 to the Avon Lake City Schools. This year is our 66th performance, and we are performing The Wizard of Oz. And I'm going to let these other people introduce themselves and say a few words.
Hi, Catherine Reeve Skyeb here, and Avon Lake resident. My son was a former Avon Lake City Schools student. This is my eighth year with Mighty Goliath Productions and a former president of the board, current secretary of the board, and just very pleased to meet all of you and happy that you allowed us to come in and share a little bit about us. And we want to continue our efforts to support the performing arts here at Avon Lake and hope we are able to keep doing that in the future for many more years. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Cole. Both my children went through Avon Lake City Schools, participated in performing arts, and participated in Mighty Goliath Productions with me when I first started. This is my ninth year with Mighty Goliath. I am on the Board of Directors, and this year I'm serving as Marketing Director. We hope you can all come out and see our show. Thanks.
Hi, I am Jennifer Gerchek. I am a 27-year MGP alumni. My husband and I both graduated from Avon Lake City Schools. We were members of the Performing Arts Marching Band. Our children are currently enrolled in Avon Lake City Schools. I am a board member and chair of the Communications Committee. We give our money, we do keep enough in the kitty to come back to the, next year, put on another show for you, but our money comes back to the schools between the pack. We give most of it to the pack, but then we support the Band-Aids, the orchestra, the choir, the, I'm missing one, the drama, Mrs. Frank. We come out and we give straight to those booster organizations. We also come out and support those organizations. We work very closely with Mrs. Frank and Mr. Frank. We've been known to help work on sets with them in the back as well. This year's show is February 6, 7, 8, and 9. We have shows on the 6th, 7th, and 8th at 7:00 p.m., and then on Saturday and Sundays, so the 8th and 9th at 1:30. Those are matinees. And our 8th, Saturday, the 8th, is a sensory-friendly show. We will have an ASL interpreter that has been provided. We have fundraisers all season to support that, so we have ASL interpreter, apologies.
(inaudible) doesn't give into donations to the schools at all. We do side jobs.
(laughing) Diet and donates, things like that.
(inaudible) cover the cost of that. But the sensory-friendly performance is here so that those who have hearing defects can come see because children who aren't able to sit for that long, or autistic children, deaf people, things of this nature, do not always get the opportunity to go see this kind of thing. So the sensory-friendly matinee offers that to them with the sign language interpreters, the lights are not turned all the way down. People are free if you want to get up and walk around, you're free to do that. The sound is a little bit muted, especially during the tornado, because we don't want to, you know, set up any triggers for any of the kids.
Few less visual effects, no strobing lights in our productions if there are any. The first year we offered that. We do have some family members that have children that had never been able to see them onstage before, and they had, we had some family members that were able to come and have their children see them onstage for the first time ever. And between the children crying and the families crying, it was a really fantastic experience for everyone involved. So we do hope that you'll all come out and see us. We thank you for the opportunity to let us bring this joy to your stage every year. As a high school student, I was very lucky to see this and be a benefit of it and work with, I started doing MGP when I was in high school, and have gotten to grow up with it, and now to see my kids onstage doing it as well is amazing. So we thank you for letting us bring this to your community, our community, and we hope that you'll continue. We do have people from all over, many high school alumni, Avon Lake High School alumni, many current high school members, as well as just people that really come out and love to perform, so, thank you.
So that, oh, yes. The sensory awareness, that's a Saturday show?
That's a Saturday matinee.
Saturday matinee, yes.
Okay.
So, you know, it's a wonderful, it's a very emotional performance because we just see such joy in kids' faces and their reactions because they don't get to go to these kind of things. So they have their time, if they want to sing along, you know, they're free to do pretty much whatever they want to do while they're, we set up like a little timeout room if they're just a little too overstimulated and they just need to go sit somewhere quiet for a little while. So it's a wonderful feature, it's very heartwarming, and there's usually tier, pretty much every kid's eyes will be going, you know.
And the cast is expecting it as well, so there is no awkward hesitation or that, you know, if you've ever been to a show and had a child screaming or someone go, "What they say?", you know, sometimes you can get that pause. There is none of that, especially in that sensory-friendly performance, because we are expecting that. We understand that's what that is there for, for those people that are really not sure that they can be welcomed at a more traditional setting. This is open. They're more than welcome in our performance. Any other questions we can answer?
No, it's great, and obviously with the movie Wicked Out, we got some nice cross-marketing going on in theaters and all the excitement there.
(inaudible) in September, they had that whole month of Wizard of Oz, so we were like...
It is the 100th anniversary, it is the 100th anniversary of The Wizard of Oz, of the book. So we did not know that when we selected this, though we didn't really plan that, it was just, it was exciting for us, so.
All right.
Can we leave, is it okay if we leave some of these on the back?
Sure.
If there's anyone that would like, and you can find...
(inaudible) from the bags on the bus.
Sure.
And the audience members.
Tickets can be found at MightyGoliath.com or on our Facebook page as well.
Awesome, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for supporting our students. We appreciate that.
I wasn't ready for your, kind of giving back my alumni, and that's a very, very hard question.
Mr. Sherbin entered the meeting at 6:09 during the MGP presentation.
All right. Our next item on our agenda is our Curriculum Instruction Report. Dr. DB?
Sure. We have two pieces this evening. Tonight's School Spotlight is our LEAPs program, and Stacy Vince and Megan Miller are here to share about LEAPs, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to brag a little bit about LEAPs. Again, LEAPs is learning early and parent support, and just a few facts about that we have. It's kind of crazy. We have 129 preschoolers within our program. We've seen a 24% increase in students with disabilities between last school year and this year. We work within six community preschool programs to provide special education supports to kids, and we've seen an almost 50% increase of referrals coming into our program from last year. So like, the population might not be growing, but we see this huge increase in prevalence of disability. Just about our program, it's our amazing team. We have five and a half teachers, 10 paraprofessionals, one and a half speech-language pathologists, a school psychologist, a physical therapist, occupational therapist, and an occupational therapy assistant that provides all the specialized instruction that we need for our kiddos that are coming in to help them get ready to go on to school age. What we thought we'd do today is kind of highlight our community partnerships that we have with two amazing partners, and Megan's going to talk a little bit about that.
So the first partnership is with preschool sports, and that's with Craig Collins. This is our second year with him, and he comes in once a month and teaches our students a different type of sport. And as the students are learning these different sports, they're also learning different types of skills that we teach throughout the school year, like fine motor skills, gross motor skills, listening, following directions, social-emotional skills, and they don't even know that they're doing all these different types of skills while they're having fun and learning a sport. And then the second partnership is music on a mission. This has been around with the LEAPs program for many, many years. It is taught by Ms. Susan, who was a former music teacher for Avon Lake City Schools for over 30 years, and her other teacher, Ms. Emily. They come once a month, and they also teach different types of songs, dances, and they even do little skits with the students that they get to perform, and the kids just love it. And they also learn all different types of skills, like communication skills, social skills, following directions, again, while having fun dancing and singing.
And last, we just want to say thank you to all of you at School Board Appreciation Month. We created for you an Avon Lake mosaic. If you get a little magnifying glass out, you can see all of our kids within the pictures, but we really appreciate all that you do for us and all for our kids, so thank you.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy. We can, if you get the... Thank you. Awesome. All right. Next item on our agenda, in preparation for some of the discussions we're going to have...
Not done yet.
Oh, my bad, my bad, I jumped ahead. Sorry, Dr. DB.
That's all right.
I'll let you finish your report first.
So a week from tonight is our kindergarten information night, and it will be held through Zoom, as we've done for many years, and also will allow all the slideshow and everything to be on the website. But what I wanted to do tonight is I wanted to jump ahead and go over the information related to the full-day lottery and the half-day program. I want to thank Autumn, her department and I have worked, spent a lot of time making sure we have all of the pieces in place to do this correctly. So we, as you know, as we've talked about, we are offering all-day kindergarten, right now we've set up for 120 spots, two sections at Redwood, two at Eastview, and one at Westview. I spent a lot of time looking at where full-day kindergarten enrollment has been in the past and percentages, and that's how we came up with where those classrooms will be located. And what we will be doing is it will be a lottery where people can sign up from the lottery anytime, starting after kindergarten information night next Tuesday, all the way up through March 18th is when we'll do the initial lottery. Now, if we don't have enough at any one site, there obviously won't be a lottery, we'll just put them in the full day and they'll all have spots. So it's possible we might have a lottery at Eastview, but maybe not a lottery at Redwood, or we might have one at Westview but not at, so it is site-specific, but I will go into what happens if one school's full and another one's not in just a moment.
Jack, before you go on, can you remind me what our enrollment in kindergarten was last year?
It was 208, 183 were full-day. The, there's information related to, you know, how they register, I'm not going to go through all of that. And there's also information about the free and reduced lunch. If they qualify for free lunch, they get 75% off all of the payments, including the deposit for the lottery, and if they qualify for reduced lunch, it's 50% off. We have information on who they contact if they need help trying to see if they do qualify for free or reduced lunch, that information will be shared as well. But what I wanted to do is kind of talk about what happens if someone doesn't get in, or how we're going to handle space and so forth. So, again, if we have empty seats and we don't need to do a lottery at a school, we won't do the lottery. We'll just accept everybody, and we'll have an option to fill any empty seats through this. So if a school has a waitlist, the parents have three options. They can take a half-day slot, and we'll give them their refund immediately of the deposit that they paid to get on the, in the lottery. They can wait on the waitlist, and they can do that by waiting to see, because sometimes people register for kindergarten, they move out of the area, or they go to a private school or whatever, and seats become open. We have that happen every year right now. And then we'll wait until September and make that final decision if they're waitlisted. We'll give them a refund if they actually don't get a spot. The third thing they can do is they can open enroll to another Avon Lake City Schools Elementary School if space is available. So if they were on the waitlist for Redwood, but we have seats at Eastview, they can take a seat at Eastview and, you know, we'll go through there. We don't provide transportation on open enrollment. However, if somebody either moves out of the district or they move to the half-day, we'll obviously refund anything that they've paid at that point. If they do go to half-day right now, and we'll watch the numbers and see how everything pans out, but right now we're offering three half-day sections to start. We'll adjust, I don't want to be overstaffed when we know our kindergarten numbers have been dropping every year, so we'll have two classes at Westview, one at Redwood to start. The Westview sections will be for any students in the attendance, any in the district, and then Redwood will be just a morning class for Redwood's attendance area. We bus all of our half-day students, and we'll continue to bus the half-day students, even if they're under a mile away, we will still bus them to and from half-day. And then there's an option when they register for half-day to request AM or PM or building site, and then I just put a reminder in there for the parents that we don't have lunch for half-day.
Can you go back to the previous slide? There's a point I didn't actually understand.
Sure.
On number three, what does that mean, transportation is not provided?
So right now, we allow students to request to open enroll to another elementary school outside of their zone, so we have about, I don't know, 25 students...
It's if you're outside of your zone.
Yes, it's not outside of our district, it's outside of your zone.
Okay, sorry.
And then you have to apply for that every year to do that.
Jack, I have a question, if you go back a slide. On the open enrollment in another school, what if there are, you know, 10 spots at the other school, but there are more than 10 people that want to try, like, how do you, is it another lottery, or how do you rank?
No, so in the lottery, everyone gets a number in the lottery. We'll draw all the way through the lottery, so it'll be in numerical order.
Okay.
And then if they register after March 18th, then, and we'll have people that'll register after that, that they'll go in based on the date that they register. And that's actually what we do right now, how we fill up our full days right now in some buildings.
So if a student ends up at a building not in their zone, as a kindergartner, what happens when they become a first grader then?
So the same thing that happens right now, they can request open enrollment, like, we, I don't know if we sent them out yet or not, if we're going out this week, but we have about 25 kids who attend schools out of their zone. They have to apply every year to stay in that building, and it's just based on space. Generally, we let them stay because we've kind of budgeted for it, but sometimes, there've been times where if there's growth in one building at a grade level, we've had to tell them to go back to their home school. And they know that when they sign up, it's clear every year, we put that on there, that going out of zone is a year-by-year decision.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
All right, thank you.
Okay. So I think this is like our fourth meeting in a row where we're having some sort of financial update, but we want to bring a few of the issues back in front. We understand that not everyone listens or attends every meeting, but I know there's some commentary about some of the things going on with our revenue, and while we've talked about it at past meetings, I asked Ms. Reed to kind of put together a summary of where we've been at the last few meetings and where our number's at before we head into our decisions about upcoming levies.
Thank you. Some of you may have seen, there's been some recent newspaper articles about reappraisal, millage, taxes, and we just wanted to share what process we've used as we've kind of navigated through when reappraisal occurs. We just have estimates to work with until the end of December, so we just wanted to talk a little bit about that timeline and what we've used and how we've handled that process. So if we look at the month of July, all of our homeowners received a letter from the county auditor, and within that letter, it provided your expected value for 2024, that's your tax year 2024 that you'll pay in 2025. So with that, it created a lot of questions for our community members, so I went ahead and linked that article to an ongoing blog that we had been keeping on our district website under our news section. So actually, those articles are still available if anyone is interested in viewing those. And then as we look at August and through October, we continued just that education piece with our community. We continued, Superintendent Magyar has an email that she sends out very regularly, as well as we've done coffee talks, we've done community forums, we send a newsletter to every resident in Avon Lake, not just our parents, because a lot of our school newsletters hit just our parents. So we wanted to make sure we were reaching everyone. Within that newsletter, we provided a lot of financial information, a lot of information related to reappraisal. Our Director of Operations provided some videos about our facilities and why there was a need for additional funding, and why there was a need to replace our buildings and reduce that footprint. I also interviewed our county auditor, and I did a couple informational videos as well related to reappraisal. What does that look like? Are my taxes really going to go up 28%? What does that mean? So there were a lot of questions that we tried to just offer ongoing information to our community during that time period. So then as we approached November, both of our bond issues, and our bond issue and our operating levy failed. So with that, the board then, we have a statutory requirement under Ohio Revised Code that says we have to file a five-year forecast by November 30th with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. So to meet that statutory requirement, we went ahead and we filed our five-year forecast. We filed it based on the information that was available at that time, because as we look at our forecast methodology, which I didn't go into detail on that, I just jumped into our process, but that forecast methodology includes using some historical trend, using current factors. Our five-year forecast is only as good as the day that we do it, because at any point a change can be made. We've seen that. Our power plant left us, made a big change in our forecast. So we update it as we see changes. We knew with the failure of our levies, we would have to make some reductions. We had some cuts that the board took a considerable amount of time to determine what those would look like. And as we worked through that process, we factored in our November forecast everything we knew at that time. But again, it was estimates related to value, but included in those estimates, it included the pieces that tied a reappraisal, such as inside millage, which we'll get into some of these details a little further into the presentation. So as we approached December, we went ahead and the Ohio Department of Taxation did certify the tax values for tax year '24. And as they did that, we updated our five-year forecast. We provided that update at our December board meeting. Included in there were reductions that at that point in time, we knew, additional reductions from what we knew in November. So again, we were looking at estimates in November when it came to property valuation and tax rates, but in our December forecast, it included actual figures related to those tax rates and valuations. So the board determined at that time that there was still definitely a need for additional operating, additional operating funds, and you'll see that as we get further into the presentation. So as we approach January, the board is looking at our January 6 meeting, and as Mr. Stobie mentioned, we again went over what did November look like? What does December now look like, now that we have actual numbers? The board did decide at that point in time to pass the first resolution. There's two resolutions that are needed if you place a levy on the ballot at any given election. So the board did choose to pass some resolutions of necessity, which all that means is we preserved the right to go on the ballot in May. So if we wanted to be on the May ballot, we had to pass our resolutions by January 6. So we went ahead, the board passed a couple resolutions that they wanted to at least preserve that option to look at. So as we look at tonight's meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about the finances, and then the board's going to also have some continued dialogue about those levy options, because we now have numbers back from the county auditor to certify the per $100,000 cost for each one of those.
Autumn, just to interject there, those letters that people received in July have still not materialized in tax bills. I think you talked to the auditor that they should be coming out within the next couple of days, is that correct?
Correct. So the Treasurers Office mentioned to me that they plan on sending out tax bills on the 24th of this week. I did check the county auditor's site this morning, and they're not, there's no electronic access yet to individual tax bills, but they are supposed to be mailed on the 24th of So as I mentioned, the forecast methodology, this is just a look at the forecast and what's factored in there. So we've already gone over this slide, so if you'd like to proceed, thanks, Jack.
So what's the difference in our revenue? What did it mean going from projected numbers to actual numbers? Well, again, we factor in to the best of our ability what we believe based on information that the county auditor provides to us, based on the factors that are going on around us. So if you compare our November estimated values to our December actual values, for our current fiscal year, we'll be receiving, and this is just specific to real estate, because that's our homeowners, public utility personal property would be just a select handful. We have less than five taxpayers who pay public utility personal property. So this is just looking at real estate revenue. So about $438,000 additional revenue for fiscal year '25, as I adjusted rates and evaluations and circumstances for where we are. So that's about a 1.2% difference. Again, that's on, you know, in fiscal '25, a $36 million budget. When we look at fiscal '26, it was an $834,000 difference, so a 2.1% difference. And if you look at all the way through the forecast, by 2029, it was an additional $824,000, which is 1.9% of the $43 million budget at that time. So what you have to remember as you look at these numbers, we were already including everything that these articles are coming out and talking about. The number might not have been exact, but we were including very close to what the percentages would be. So we are not seeing an additional, a significant additional amount of revenue now that we have actual numbers versus what was estimated.
Well, Autumn, I just want to say, it's pretty good estimating. I mean, just looking at the percentages, it was close. We didn't look at it that way, maybe because we as a board didn't see that significant of a swing between the estimate and actual, but... of a swing between the estimate and actual, but perhaps going forward, we can do an additional analysis as we roll around, just as a best practice, so people can see that. Because I think that our cycle of our statutory requirements on any year that reappraisals are happening, I'm not sure we can change the timing of when we get actuals.
We cannot. Reappraisal happens every six years, and we'll talk a little bit more about that into the presentation, but no, that's law.
And just to clarify or say that again, like, by law of the state of Ohio, we have to have a five-year forecast before the end of November. But we didn't even have the numbers from the auditor until early December, so that's why we-
Actually, more mid to late December.
Yeah, mid to late December. That's the reason why we had the meeting in November to present the forecast, and then immediately had an updated forecast as soon as we had those numbers, so appreciate that.
Correct. You're welcome.
And also, as you said, in November, when you presented it, we use those estimates. And then we got the actuals, obviously, you were close, I mean, less than 2% difference. And then this article comes out this week, and so for people who have not followed this, and I think this is why we asked you to do this, any additional revenue mentioned in that article has already been taken into account in our previous budgets going back to November. It's not like, oh, we're getting a new pot of money dropped on us that we have to add to our budget now.
That's correct. And we'll even go into some of those details even further into the presentation. So as we look at our November forecast, and this is using those estimated values, our November forecast showed that by the end of the five-year period in fiscal 2029, we would have a negative ending cash balance of $535,000. The state does not allow a school district to operate in the red. So we have two choices. You either, three choices. One, you either make cuts. Two, you ask for more money. Or three, you do a combination of those to get to where you're not deficit spending and you're bringing that cash balance back up. So this is a screenshot then of what December's forecast looked like. And the bottom line, after looking at all of the reductions that have been factored in, we included staffing reductions, we included the addition of some college credit plus classes, which, you know, added expense to our forecast. We had to add a salt truck, a regular truck. It also included capping the all-day kindergarten in the closure of Erieview. So when you factor all of that in, those were the differences that we knew from November to December that changed in our forecast. Our bottom line at the end of 2029 was we had $7.2 million as a cash balance versus a negative half a million. Now, $7.2 million may sound like a lot of money. It is in my checkbook at home. It's not in our school district's checkbook. That is less than two months' worth of bills for us. So we have on average this year about $4.5 million a month in bills. It makes me extremely uneasy to be functioning as a school district with less than two months' cash on hand. So what's the bottom line? The need for the operating levy still existed after we made all of these reductions and factored in the actual values. So now I'd just like to go into a little bit about what is reappraisal and what was the financial impact to our district. So reappraisal is also known as a sexennial reappraisal. It occurs every six years, per Ohio Revised Code. The county auditor ensures physical inspection of each property and then sends a recommendation valuation of change down to the Ohio Department of Taxation by October 31st. Tax rates aren't certified by the Ohio Department of Taxation until more towards the end of December, as we've discussed. And just looking at our timeline, the reappraisal process, even after the county auditor conducts the physical reappraisal piece, it's a long process that's extremely complicated, has lots of pieces tied to it. So for us, throwing in there that we needed to look at placing a levy on the ballot, there were a lot of things that we looked at to ensure that we had all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed. So on the next couple of slides, these are taken directly from, if you go to the Lorraine County Auditor's website, and he has refreshed his website, it actually has a lot of things about the reappraisal for 2024. A lot of great resources on their webpage, if you're interested in them. I picked a few slides that were pertinent just to the general process, but then also very, very much applicable to here in Avon Lake and how we're impacted here in our school district. So there's something called inside millage. And what inside millage is, you probably saw, and I'm going to show you a chart here in a minute, there was an article that was posted that had a chart that the county auditor provided of school districts and then increased revenue from inside millage. So every school district shares a piece of unvoted millage that is with the county and the city. So for Avon Lake schools, we have 4.2 mills of 10 unvoted mills. Again, that's called inside millage. So as valuations increase, the millage rates get reduced, even on certain levies within inside millage, and we'll talk about those in further detail into the presentation.
Autumn, that 4.2, who decides who gets 4.2? How that 10 is broken up?
That was probably decided when the school district was established, and it's not the school district.
It's the county?
Correct.
Okay. And we don't have any ability to change that 4.2. The county says this is what you get out of the 10 mills.
Well, that is a very complicated conversation that I'm going to answer with, can a school district get more inside millage? Yes, it can, but there's a lot of, that's definitely a weed conversation that we won't have for tonight, because, you know, the topics that we're discussing tonight are going to be complicated enough. So this is again, one of the visuals that the county auditor provided, and you can see that on our inside millage, the 4.2 mills, and you can see all these school districts in Lorraine County, we all have a different amount for inside millage. Because some school districts may have chosen to move inside millage, as Mike was just inquiring about. We might have had some counties and cities who have a different number of mills than we do here in our school district. But we have 4.2 inside mills versus if you look at Avon, they get 5.8 inside mills. North Ridgeville gets 6.1. Elyria is the same as us, they get 4.2. I've highlighted these four districts on this slide, just to show the purposes of, some of us are similar in how we're funded and some are not. We all have different types of levies on our books, and you're going to be able to see as we get into the presentation, all of the levies that we have on our books and how they're impacted. But when you look at Avon Lake schools, we did receive, or will receive this upcoming year, $1.4 million in additional revenue due to additional inside millage revenue, due to reappraisal. Whereas if you look at North Ridgeville, they got almost 2.1 million, Avon got 1.6, and Elyria got almost 1.3. And again, all of these charts that I'm showing you are within the county auditor's presentation. It's like 100 and some slides, so there's a lot of detail there if you want to get into So now we're going to talk about different types of school levies. We've talked about inside millage. Well, we're also going to talk about outside millage. So outside millage would be our levies, like outside the 10-mill limitation is what it's called. So that would include our current expense operating levies, it would include our bond levies, our permanent improvement levy, our emergency levies or substitute levies. Those are all part of outside millage. So this is where it gets a little confusing, and I thought maybe the chart would be helpful as people are looking at our presentation. So some of these types of levies and millage are subject to what's called a reduction factor. And what that means is, as values increase, millage is reduced to ensure on certain types of levies, to ensure school districts do not collect more money than what was voted on at the ballot at the time the levy was passed. But then there's also a column that talks about the 20-mill floor calculation. So it shows which types of levies are included in the 20-mill floor calculation and which types are not. As you can see just from this chart, it's not, it's not just cut and dry, I'm going to add 2 plus 2 and I get my 4. There's lots of what-ifs within here. So we're going to talk a little bit about the 20-mill floor, and these slides again are from the county auditor's presentation. So he did provide an example for Avon Lake schools. So on the left-hand side, you'll see this, these are all of our levies that are on our books and the full voted millage associated with those levies. So what that means is, that was the amount of millage that was on the ballot at the time the levy was placed to vote. So that's what our full, full rate means there. And you can see we have 63.806 mills, if you look at it from a full rate standpoint. But Avon Lake schools is on what's called the 20-mill floor. So because of that, some of our levies are adjusted by the tax reduction factors. And what that means is, again, as valuation of the city increases, each levy's millage is rolled back, and it's then called the effective millage. So when you look at our effective millage for residential, it's not 49.26 mills, it's 16.55 mills. So what happens when you see, and I'm going to show you in our next graph, some revenue that's going to be generated because we're at that 20-mill floor. So what happens is, the state guarantees a school district receives 20 mills. So as the reduction factors occur, you can drop below 20 mills, but because the law says we have to collect 20 mills, there's an adjustment that occurs. And in a year where reappraisal looks like we did this time, with close to a 29% increase in value for Avon Lake, there is an adjustment that occurs. So there was additional revenue that was received, but again, already factored into our five-year forecast. All of this revenue that I'm talking about, inside millage, this being on the 20-mill floor, this was already included in our forecast calculations. So this is just a comparison, looking at, not all school districts are on the 20-mill floor. The majority of school districts are, but not all. So when you look at these districts that are on the 20-mill floor, we're going to see $4.5 million in additional revenue. That includes that inside millage. So you're going to look at Avon, they're going to get about 3.6 million, Elyria's going to get 3.6 million, North Ridgeville's going to get 4.3 million, Lorraine JVS is going to get 4 million. So there is additional revenue that a school district may see if they fall on the 20-mill floor. But again, not all school districts are. So I thought this was a helpful slide that the county auditor provided, that would give just everyone kind of a baseline. You know, we hear over and over again, why do you use $100,000 home value? None of our homes are worth $100,000. Well, first, the law says we have to, because that's the baseline for what the county auditor calculates everything on. But if you, on the left-hand side of this page, if you look at the market value of $100,000, and then you look at the assessed value, which is 35% of that, that's how you get your $35,000. This is the effective millage for Avon Lake, the total effective millage. The taxes are calculated per $100,000 in value of $1,861. So that's what we're currently paying per $100,000. Now, the average value change for Avon Lake was close to 28%. So when you factor that in, the market value would go up to $127,860. And when you look at the change in the effective rate, taxes per $100,000, that calculation, which is now, remember, $127,000, would go from $1,861 to $2,117. So that's a 13.75% increase. It's not a 28% increase. And that's what we tried to communicate as we were talking about some of the reappraisal informational pieces that we put out from August to date. Those pieces of information, we're trying to communicate that. So I would be happy to answer any questions that the board would have.
I guess this is more of a comment than a question, but, you know, when it gets to, when we're talking about our levy options, we're considering, one of the reasons why we're looking at an emergency levy from a standpoint of transparency with the public and understanding how it affects is, the emergency levies that we're all proposing are for a fixed dollar amount. So all this stuff about changes in values and millage doesn't change from the standpoint of, the schools would only receive that dollar amount, that fixed dollar amount per year in any of the three scenarios that we're talking about. I guess the question would be, well, how does that affect me as a taxpayer? And that really gets into proration of each person's taxpayer going forward. But when we went through the levy process the first time, we were able to do a levy calculator that could kind of spit out, based on my home value, how much an emergency levy, or actually, at the time, it was a bond levy, might cost. Do you think we'll be able to get back to that point now, that we're through revaluation and things are kind of set now for the next period?
I think that it's definitely something we can talk about. It's how that information is presented, though, depending on what direction the board would go. Would they do one levy? Would they do a combination of two levies, meaning a bond issue and an operating levy? Would they only do an operating levy? So there's different ways that we would have to look at it, and we would communicate it based on what direction the board decided to go.
I just know, like, people ask us, why didn't we have this this last time? And for all these reasons that we laid out, we couldn't put a calculator of any kind out there, because the revaluation was affecting it ones differently.
You're exactly right. As you can see, there are so many pieces to reappraisal that impact taxes. And I actually, I was fortunate, because the county auditor agreed to come and sit with me and talk a little bit about that in one of our videos. And I asked him, you know, Cuyahoga County has a tax calculator on their website, why don't you? And he was very open in saying, for all of the same reasons that we're not going to do it when there's a reappraisal year, there are too many calculations that can be calculated incorrectly, and you could give someone the wrong information. He has no control, a county auditor has no control over the tax reduction factors that the Ohio Department of Taxation are going to set. That's set by the Ohio Department of Tax, not by the county auditor. The county auditor makes a recommendation of what he believes the values are. Well, then you throw in this inside millage piece, you throw in the 20-mill floor piece, you throw in that each and every levy are calculated differently. Some are calculated and included when it comes to inside millage. Some are excluded from the effective rate. So all of those pieces are the reasons why it would have been an estimate- So all of those pieces are the reasons why it would have been an estimate that I can tell you, someone would hold the county auditor to, they would hold the school district to, that we couldn't guarantee was, uh, an estimate that we felt comfortable with, because there's just too many moving pieces to it. But now that we have those actual values, now that the county auditor has those actual values, again, I was on his website, it looks as if, now that those values are certified, that there will be a place on his website where he has a, a tax calculator at least for, um, 2024. You can select whatever city you live in, you can enter in your new value. Outside of that, I, I don't have more details about the county auditor's site, but I, I will say there is some very good information. If you want to know more about our community, the communities around us and what they received, he provided a lot of information on his website that would be useful to a taxpayer.
I just want to say that I'm empathetic to all of us, whoever designed the system. Shame on them. It is complicated and I don't know if there's going to, maybe an idea is, can we offer a course in taxation for community members at our high school? I mean, it's very difficult for, not, I mean, I'm, I feel blessed because I come to these meetings every month. We talk a lot. It, but for, if I wasn't on this board, I would honestly be struggling to keep up. I just want to say that. This is, it is complicated. And I appreciate you taking the time to do this tonight, but, um, I'm empathetic for, or, I mean, we're all living in a system we didn't design, I think, at the end of the day. So I think it presents us challenges as we try to navigate this with the community and as people are trying to come along. And what I love about this community is everybody wants to come along. It's just how do you come along, something that really should be an entire semester of study, based on what I've been able to see.
You need more than a semester.
Well, I, it's a lot.
Sounds like a new AP class, Jen.
Something.
And, you know, I, I was just telling, uh, one of the gentlemen in the audience before the meeting started, it's complicated because they don't want us to know how it works. They want to make it complicated and, and, you know, this is, this is Autumn Reed speaking. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. They want to make it complicated. Because if they make it complicated, you don't really realize what's going on. Just like how we're funded at a state level. Out of $8,200 in state funding, we're supposed to get per student, we get just shy of, I think, 802 out of 8,200. Why? And everyone always is like, how is that possible? Well, ask your legislators in Columbus. So it's, it's challenging for us as we talk about levies, as we talk about reappraisal, millage, all of these pieces. The board will say to me, you know, keep a high level, don't get into the weeds, because the weeds, you get entangled and you can't get out with the school stuff. You just can't. So we try and keep it as easily understood as we can, but I'm not going to lie, it is complicated.
It's, it's one of the reasons why we don't go very long without updating our forecast and always keep an eye on that. That's kind of our, our north star as far as making any financial decisions is, where's, where's the forecast? What has changed to it? Where do we go from here? So, um, you know, that's part of the journey that we've been on. So, um, before we get into the next item, which is public participation, I, I did want to just set the tone a little bit. Um, you know, when I look back at since our, our, since the election in November, at our various meetings, um, you know, we, you know, in November, we took some time to, um, hear from the community about some of the proposed cuts that we're, we were deciding on making and we moved forward with a lot of those decisions. Um, there's still a few open items as we look towards next year, but, um, we had put out, uh, um, in December, a community survey, um, which asked, uh, it was a, we, we actually had the folks come and present about it at our last meeting, um, but a, a scientific survey about our, our levy options and some feedback. And, um, we, as a board, have reviewed all that. And as part of this process, at the last board meeting, um, uh, the board somewhat debated the options that we were looking at, at the operating levy and bond issue and went back and forth. And we, as Autumn mentioned, moved some of those solutions forward. You know, we're at a point tonight where we have to pick one, um, decision or one option or none, no options. Um, and so I kind of wanted to set that tone before we had our public participation because this is really our, our final chance to, to, uh, listen to the public before we have to make those decisions. And I, I wanted to create space for that, along with any questions from, from Autumn's presentation tonight. So, um, as far as our public participation goes, the, just a couple of reminders about that process. It's permitted to allow individual members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern. It's not intended to form for extended conversation. The primary role of the board is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes the board members may respond or ask questions, but not always. Whether or not, whether we respond or not, your input is valued. The public participation is for general comments, matters relevant to the school district. Those who wish the, uh, address the board must complete a comment card, um, which I know Dr. D B had some of those out before. Each person will be given three minutes to speak up until a total of 30 minutes is used. So I want to make sure that everyone had, who wanted to speak tonight, had a chance to fill out those cards. Okay? Dr. D B, how many have we received?
I have, uh, three so far. I have four.
Is there anyone else who would like to fill one out? Okay. If you want, if you want, would fill out a card and, and bring it to Dr. D B.
They're on the back table.
Okay. And with that, uh, we'll have the first speaker tonight.
Our first speaker is Gerald Phillips.
Gerald Phillips from Avon Lake, concerned citizen. Uh, in November, I gave the board some information about the TIF. And, and, excuse me, and then in December, I also gave you a, a handout. Now, I wasn't able to attend the January 6th meeting, but I heard that the board wasn't eager to grant the TIF. And, uh, one of the things, you know, uh, what they want, they want the maximum TIF. You know, they want 30 years, they want a hundred, uh, 100%. And in the development agreement, there's a provision that deals with the city in the sense that, where the city administration is supposed, agrees to support the developers' efforts to secure the school district's agreement for the largest TIF. So we got council urging you to give the largest TIF. And I think I indicated that the TIF they're talking about using 15 million for the land. I indicated that land was appraised at 2.37. I gave you that appraisal, uh, and then 15 million for improvements. And I made this comment many times, that city council, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. All right? The city's taking money from the school district and giving it to the developer to put inputs. So, uh, I hope you stay your ground on that. I had a couple of questions, uh, on this identification metrics. Uh, I couldn't find anything on the website about the program, other than a little blurb in the January newsletter, which referred to a January 8th letter. So that was the only information. If there's any additional information that, uh, because I had some neighbors ask me about it, so, uh, that would be informative that, uh, if I could get that information. As far as Autumn's, uh, you know, that issue deals with the House Bill 920 that goes back a long time, that basically says that if the values go up, the millage goes down so that it, you don't collect one more dollar. And that's the reduction factor. But then it has the floor of the 20 mils and the 10 mils. So it's a complicated formula. I don't know if students, you know, you know, uh, could comprehend that. I mean, I was telling all my neighbors, your taxes aren't going to go up 28%, it's going to go up something. It'll probably go 10, 12% because of, of that factor. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Wallace.
Hold on, Jen.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine. I would just encourage you to stay till when, um, we do superintendent's announcements and I can give you an update on both of those items that you mentioned.
Thank you. Beth Wallace, um, mom and resident. I wanted to speak about the biometric scanning. Um, I wanted to simply voice my opinion on the recent fingerprint scanning and the timing. I do appreciate the notification, but was disappointed that scanning began before the deadline to opt-out labs. I realize some parents are comfortable with this type of surveillance, but I'm among the many that are not. I feel I have a healthy concern with the very slippery slope that surveillance technology can present. We all know technology can be hacked. We lecture our kids constantly about the dangers of what they post, that whatever is in the cloud stays in the cloud, it can't be deleted, it's there forever. So to say that the scan of the children who opted out can just be deleted, I don't completely buy it and it worries me. Um, with that in mind, I personally want as little of my family's data in the cloud as I possibly can get, even though stuff's been there in the past, I don't need to put anymore in there. Despite giving the chance to opt-out, I think there's a huge harm and risk in scanning the children in advance that did get scanned. There was a lot, opt-out date for a reason and I felt that should have been respected. I realize there's pain points that tech and surveillance alleviate, but I also believe there's options that human interactions can alleviate more and in better ways than AI can. As a parent of the children, you're entrusted to protect for six hours a day and educate. I felt the school put its priorities ahead of the parents, took the quick, easy and potentially risky option ahead of waiting, before waiting to see what the parents actually wanted. Without our children, there'd be no school. With that in mind, I wonder why the potential concerns were so blatantly dismissed and I hope and expect the school will not make that overstep again. Thank you.
Gerald, you're going to touch on all this, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Our next speaker is Mike Wallace.
I just want to bring up, I've been doing some deep diving on studies on 5G lately and the effects on the kids, uh, mental effects, things like that. I'm not sure if people are aware, right out in front of the school? You guys have a 5G antenna? You guys aware of that? Yes, Bill? Uh, we also have two on top of the building. There's one on the corner of 83 and, um, uh, Lake Road here, there's another one on top of City Hall. In fact, there's 183 5G towers or antennas within a three-mile radius of the school. So I guess my question is, has anybody looked into the dangers of 5G on children? Just any studies, things like that? So I, I would like to ask you guys if you guys would look into that and, uh, inform all of us parents about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Minich.
Hi. My name's Sarah Minich and I have three kids in the district, two at Leaps and one at Westview. Um, I honestly was not going to speak at all because I know we had some conversations and kind of discussed, but then when I saw the kindergarten slides come up, I just have some things, I just want to make the board kind of aware of, and I don't know if we're looking at it from all different perspectives. My two youngest are on IEP for speech IPs and for speech delays. Um, my one that will be going to kindergarten, he, we held it back for three years to give him an extra opportunity to grow and develop and get that early intervention that he needed, that the Leaps teachers are amazing and have provided for him. My concern moving forward is students on IEPs are not prioritized to that full-day kindergarten. And that's concerning to me. Only students whose minutes go past a half-day and students like my son, who's on a speech delay, is impacting his literacy, his reading. And as an early education educator in a nearby district, it just breaks my heart that I might have, not have that opportunity for my son and knowing that early intervention for those kids and how their brain can develop and that impact happens when they're young, losing out on that opportunity kind of moving forward. I know we kind of, my husband and I as a family, we're like, it's out of our hands, we've got to wait for the lottery system to happen. But our, our, last week at our PTA meeting, it was brought to our attention that at Westview, there's only two half-day and one full-day kindergarten. Um, and it was also brought to our attention, we didn't realize there was free and reduced lunches also. Being in different schools throughout, every school has a different amount of students that has that. And I think that it's concerning to me that we aren't considering kids that are already at risk as one of those full-day spots and that now my son might not have that opportunity moving forward. And it goes into, I mean, we have the Free Appropriate Public Education Act and different things of, is this really the most appropriate step for these students at risk moving forward? These kids that are already missed out on, they were COVID kids and I couldn't take them to storytime, we couldn't go to playdates. And that he will be missing a total of 13,500 minutes less socially than kids that will be in a full-day program. And under specifically foundations, hegemony, your reading skills, he's going to be missing out on a total of 4,860 minutes. So that's a huge concern and I just, I know it's next week and I know, but I really think the board, you guys need to look at that, because those students are already at risk. And we're sending them in now, just hoping that we're, we live in the right neighborhood and the right spot. And my son has already cried because socially, he needs to be with his siblings and his brother and getting on that bus. And now I might tell him that he has to go to a different school just because where we live, even though he already is on an IEP and needs that. So I just ask the board to consider that and look at it before next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chuck Rollick.
Just wanted to make two quick comments in regards to the presentation tonight. I've had the enjoyable experience of being through three evaluation cycles. This one is pretty typical of what goes on. We're always shocked on how much our property values go up and we're always, oh, well, the taxes didn't go up that far. But it does happen, it goes on. And I think the important point to get out to the community and for everybody to remember is, if you go back to 2010, and that's an easy number to find in the state data, and look at inflation from 2010 to 2024, inflation rate has gone up, the cost of living, et cetera, is at 41%. This school district has done a great job. Our operating costs have increased 40 and one-half percent and our revenue has increased 39 and a quarter percent. So we've done a good job and we've managed our way through what the state has done to us with their illegal funding system. So hopefully we can keep things moving forward and, uh, good luck with your decision tonight.
Thank you.
Tony Serino is our next speaker.
Hi. The survey you guys presented last week, or that was presented to us last week, mentioned that a large percentage of respondents say they prefer to get information by word of mouth. I'll tell you, I got a lot of information the last two meetings from being here and the information was accurate, straight from the source, including, you know, the conversation about the 30% increase in taxes doesn't, or in valuations, doesn't mean your tax bill's going to go up 30%. While the one-to-many style of conversations that you guys tend to have, um, with, with you and the community is great, um, I'm also seeing a lot of misinformation that is given, not from you, but from word-of-mouth communications, um, be it in conversations with neighbors, on Facebook, whatever. As we go through this process again, of going through a levy or a bond issue, I would encourage the board to find ways to help combat that misinformation, whether it's having a face on a Facebook forum or virtual, excuse me, virtual Zoom Q and A questionnaires or, um, some sort of public input that way. Also recognizing too, that when you guys do have these public forums, not everybody can make it to the forums to ask questions. So I think, um, a more opportune way for people to participate would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Great idea.
Yeah, I always say, quit getting your information off Facebook.
Yeah, I always say, quit getting your information off Facebook. I do not believe anything you see on Facebook.
Yeah.
Okay. We thank everyone for our comments. I know Mrs. Magar will address some of the stuff on the biometrics a little bit later. But kind of back to the issue at hand here, as we get into our treasures discussion items, we actually have an issue to start with that's not related to any levies, item A, so I figured we could kind of knock that one out of the way first before we get into the levy discussion. So there's authorization for purchasing a school bus bid from the Ohio School Bid Council. Any comments on that issue? This is to purchase one school bus for the, and trade in one of the 2005 school buses. Any questions on that?
I have questions. As we, I know that there's going to be some adjustments to transportation, but we've not, we've not fully decided that yet, although I've just heard Jack say one mile, like, we eventually need to get that decision, I think, made, but in lieu of that, Ned, are we expecting any changes to the number of buses needed in our fleet overall? We just haven't had a chance to talk about that.
So we're going to need to take a look at that. My guess is we're also going to see an increase in midday routes because of the half-day kindergarten as well, so as that shakes out, we may or may not need as many buses in the fleet. We're in the 30s right now, but with the increase in midday routes, we'd want to be sure. And so the item appears before us this evening because we are looking at a 20-year-old bus that we should keep on a replacement cycle. So while those numbers are certainly being worked out and may result in, in a reduction of routes potentially, I also think there's going to be some increases in other places that we're going to want to be sure on before moving forward.
I have a motion to approve the purchase of the school bus bid.
I still move.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Alpasscar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I know in this format, we have items B through F, but, and Dr. Debe, I don't know if you can pull up the, kind of the summary scenario slide, just so we know what we're talking about here? You have from last time?
He pulled up your, your bio.
Apologize for not asking that in advance, I just figured you always had it at your fingertips.
For those of you that did not attend the last meeting, or maybe have not seen the materials, you're pulling up the presentation from last time, Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was on the organizational meeting.
The very important.
Do you have the summary sheet of the options?
We're asking for the chart, that makes more sense.
The chart, not the actual?
Yeah, not the option one.
Yeah, there you go. Or discussion items, yeah, there you go. Okay.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. As big as you can make that one slide. So again, just to recap where we were at for the last couple of meetings, so we had discussions about, at the time, what were four options, and we talked about option one being a new five-through-eight middle school, doing repairs to, where you're at was fine, Jack. That's fine. Repairs to the K-4 building, which did include money for air conditioning improvements at the three elementaries, and an operating levy of $3 million a year. The second option was two PK through, I'm sorry, PK through six and a K through six elementary building, leaving Learwood with repairs with a bond issue, and an operating levy as a separate part of that option for 2.5 million per year. The third option I'm not going to talk about because that did not move forward, that was a, to build only two schools and new buildings for all K through eight, but the cost prohibitive, so we moved on from that. And then the last option was if we did an operating-only levy, we had kind of discussed two facets of that. One, a straight operating-only $8 million per year versus a combination of a $5 million per year with a bond issue for repairs with, with no new construction at any facility. So we did not move option 4B forward last time for various reasons. So, you know, what's before us today is the option one, the option two, and what is listed on this is option 4A, and we had listed the, the values of those since that point. Autumn has gotten these completely certified from the, and maybe I'll turn that over to you, Autumn, as far as those dollar amounts versus what we had said, but we have certified that process with, so that we're ready to vote on those, correct?
Correct. So as I mentioned earlier, there's two resolutions that the board would have to pass in order to place a levy on the ballot in May. And the first resolution they passed, and that's what Mr. Stobie just described, so that resolution is called a resolution of necessity, that gives me authority to go to the county auditor to say, can you tell me how much this is going to cost a taxpayer per $100,000 of county auditor appraised value? And I've gotten those figures back. Those figures are listed in each one of the resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, and they were all actually, what Dr. Debe has pulled up on the screen are all correct, with the exception, I was a dollar off in my calculation, I rounded up and the county rounded down, so the numbers are accurate.
And so these items are listed as separate resolutions, but in, in terms of how they're linked, items B and C represent option one, option, or items D and E represent option two, and option, or resolution F is for the operating-only levy. So as a board, we can only, we will vote on all of these, but we can only put one together on the, one forward on the ballot or none, because if we were to put more than one on the ballot, there's the chance they could both pass, and that would not, that would not be good. So, you know, what we've, what we've been doing the last 30 to 60 days is, you know, listening to community input from our survey, from folks we know, and, you know, we're kind of to a point now where we've got to make that final decision from a process standpoint.
And I would like to add, so you see, there'll be separate votes on each one of these resolutions, even though they're combined, meaning if there's a bond issue, there is a need for an operating levy as well. Legally, we cannot combine, the law doesn't allow it, for us to combine into one vote at the ballot, an emergency levy and a bond issue. So that's why the board has to vote on the operating money separately from the bond. If you remember back to all the different types of levies, we could have put a current expense operating levy on the ballot and combined it with a bond. However, we would have had to have even higher millage because of the way that, that levy is structured and how it were impacted, being on the 20-mill floor, it would have ended up costing our taxpayers more per $100,000 in value. So it is very strategic, the way the board is placing these on the ballot. It, if you choose to put a bond issue combined with an emergency levy, they will be two separate votes at the ballot, but they are very much intertwined.
And Autumn, just if you could say, these figures are, we're going to have two different figures on the ballot, when people go to the ballot, if one of these goes through, except for, or option four is just one resolution. So option one or option two move forward for the ballot, people aren't going to see 165 or 177 on the ballot, they're going to see two different figures, one for the bond, one for the operating.
Correct.
Which when added together are going to add up to those numbers. And then, excuse me, those are the, those are the, what we call the gross numbers, if you will, because that's what, that's what needs to be on the ballot, but we know, we're going to have a bond issue rolling off, which is 60, how, do you?
Yeah, so we, we have some debt, so the bond issue that was here at the high school, and then we also have some about a little over 14, so we have $41 million in debt that's going to expire in 2026. And then we also have about a little over $14 million in debt that will expire from a 2009 bond issue. So when that debt expires, both of those will happen in 2026, that will reduce your taxes. So we're, we're going to, as we continue to educate our community of whatever option the board decides to choose, we will incorporate that reduction in millage. This is the hard part, as valuation increases, millage gets rolled back. So again, we'll give you an estimate, my best estimate, based on the factors that I know, and we collect currently roughly about two mils on that debt that is set to expire. So it is about $60 that would be offset per $100,000 in cost.
So if someone is listening later and going online and seeing these numbers, yes, on the ballot language, you're going to see two numbers that add up to, you know, 165 or 177 or whatever, which, whatever option passes. However, what you're actually paying on, what you feel.
Incremental.
Yeah, the incremental tax increase is not going to be that high, it'll be roughly $60 less. So really, option one is $105 incremental, or the other one is $117 incremental, as to above what you're paying now.
Correct.
And it's hard to remember that this, if, even if it passes in May, that it does not actually go into effect until 2026, when the other one is falling off.
Correct. We, and Autumn, you hit on this, we don't, whatever passes, hopefully something passes in May, we, we don't start collecting on that until '26, correct?
Correct. Yeah, regardless of whatever type of levy, should a levy pass any time this calendar year, we do not collect anything until calendar '26.
So I'd like to bring up the last couple of weeks, several people have reached out to me and have asked that we not put a building project on the ballot this year, that they would like to wait, they want to see what their tax bill is, they want to see how their finances play out, they want to see what this new administration is bringing towards our economic future, and they feel that they would be more comfortable if we waited a year. Now, I've discussed this with a couple of board members, and I think, and I understand that we see as a board, a tremendous need in this district, and this board has done a fabulous job the last few years trying to address all the needs of all of the buildings. The community said, no, that's just too much. So we're trying to break it down into a more believable project. And I see the options, and I've talked to several folks about the options, and they really want more than buildings, and I'm hearing this from more than one, is a return of what we've lost. So they've asked me, and I'm just making this public, they've asked me to bring this up in public, to kindly consider whatever we decide, they want a return of everything that we've lost, they want back. And I just want to bring this up, when we make these decisions, we have about, and I talked to Jack about this, about 375 students going to, from Avon Lake, going to private schools in the elementary level. When you schedule a building, and the public needs to know this too, you can't take it lightly that we're losing students through vouchers or for whatever reason. Many people tell me they're not sending their children to Avon Lake Elementary Schools because they're not safe, they're old, they're falling apart, and so they're taking the vouchers and they're going elsewhere. And if we had new buildings, they would come back. When you schedule a building, you're looking at 25 students equals one teacher. Correct me, Jack, if I'm saying this wrong. That would eat 25 students per teacher.
We're a little bit less than that in our elementaries.
Well, let's say 20. I'm going 25, just to say, with 375 students that we've lost to private schools, that is 15 teachers. I want you to think about that, because as we cut staff, I hate cutting staff, but as we cut staff, and if we continue to lose students with vouchers because our, our elementary schools are in such sad shape, even if we throw in air conditioning in them, they're not up to snuff safety-wise and educationally-wise, and this is what people are coming at me, saying their children are not going to Avon Lake Public Schools right now because these buildings are not safe, they're not up to code, they're not up to whatever. That's 15 teachers that we could have in our buildings that were fabulous. Now, we will look at our numbers next year, and we lost, what, about 85 students this past year. Figure that out, people. This is serious, this is not something I take lightly. I want the teachers, I don't want to lose them, and I don't want to lose students. And I think for our future, whatever decision we make, and morally and fiscally responsible board members, in your heart, when you make that decision and I make that decision, I have to look at the community, not for right now, but whatever decision we make on building, that's going to be set for about 40 years. There will not be money being poured into the brand-new building, buildings. We need to spend our money wisely, we need to be aware of our home values. Whatever kindergarten students we have, and we have 200 this year, that's how many seniors we're going to have, their senior year. There's a high correlation between the two. I don't take that lightly either. Because at one time, Jack, what was the highest graduation number that you can recall?
Three, 47.
Yeah.
All right, three, 47. So in 12 years, we're going to be down to 200. How many teachers are we going to leave, lose? How small is this district going to become if we don't focus on the whole picture? Now, I'm not looking to just pass something. I'm looking at our district the next 30, 40 years. What does it mean? And what are we doing, and what is our responsibility? And now, I've heard some arguments like, oh, we want the five-through-eight because the parents said then their children experience a new building. And I go, is that a good reason to vote for option one? Because your child will have an opportunity to experience a new building. So what do we want as a community? And these past two weeks, I've been just asking everybody, what do you think, what do you want? We've had one email response for feedback that I know of, that people have told me about, and the one person that has responded was an educator out of the district that was for the two elementaries. We have not had anything in writing from anybody, so that I'm asking, why aren't people telling us what option they would prefer? And then we put out a survey, and people are coming to me, it was a great survey, however... And then we put out a survey, and people are coming to me, it was a great survey, however, we didn't know what we were reacting to. Are we acting to a dream? And so they're asking me, okay, if you have that five through eight building, what happens to Troy? I can't answer that because we've not, we don't know. We might have to sell that property because we're going to need the money to run this district. If we put HVAC systems in three elementary buildings, we're not going to rebuild those buildings anytime soon. You're looking 20, 30 years before we're going to address that, because you're not going to put that kind of money in a building and then turn around and rebuild. So, when we make these decisions, I think of all of these things. How are we spending the money? What does it mean down the road? And if we lose the Troy property in 25, 30 years from now, we decide to build, now that we've shrunk so much, we've decided to build one pre-K to four building, where are we going to put it? So what do these decisions mean? And what do these options mean, not just for right now, but what do they mean in the long run? And I take this position very, very seriously as far as building and how we're attracting students, and what does it mean? And we cannot guarantee to the public that we will hang on to Troy property. We can't guarantee that, we've not even talked about that. But if we pick, if we have to pick an option to build, if we pick an east side or west side location for your elementary schools, I find that to be very attractive. Many people have said that is very attractive, and I will pull my child out of Catholic schools, and I will come back to Avon Lake. So I think we need to think about this. I think this has been thrown at us in a very short period of time to consider these options. It's been very difficult trying to be objective and open-minded for me. I know what I like, but I didn't tell people what I like, I asked them, what do you want? What do you think? And they really don't want anything right now. They want what we've lost to be returned first, and then put it on the ballot. So, I think, you know, if you're looking at five through eight, you have three buildings in deeply need of repair, and the high school, so that's four. So your footprint is still fairly large. If you do option two, you have two buildings, one in deeply need of repair, but the HVAC you put in is just in the old part of the building. And then you have the high school. So, what do we want? What do we want as a community? And I don't have the answers, and I, I think that morally and fiscally, we have to be responsible for the future of Avon Lake when we vote. That's all I have to say.
So, I would, I would say, we have been looking at these issues going back five years, six years, pre-COVID, with the original OFCC report. We have engaged in countless surveys, community forums, meetings, coffee talks, whatever, you know, all those. We are at a point where we can choose to do nothing or do something. And I am in the, we need to do something camp. And I, and I respect the people that you talk to, but we cannot wait another year for someone to say, well, let me figure out if I will support it a next year, because we're, we can't keep kicking this can down the road. The buildings are getting no younger, the construction costs are getting no cheaper, and I don't want to take the chance of waiting a year for someone then only to decide, yeah, I still don't want to respond. Sorry, I kept dragging you out, right? It's a paralysis by analysis. All three of these options that we're going to consider tonight, each one would help the schools. Each one, regardless, even the operating, every one of those, or each one of those three, will improve the lives and the education of the students who go to Avon Lake. Each one of those options also have flaws. They don't address all the issues of it. We tried to address all the issues on the district, it's too expensive to do at one time. And, and for one overriding message that we've been getting is, it was too big, chunk it up for us, please. So this is what these three options are, is the attempt to chunk it up for the community. Every one of those options are going to present, whichever one passes will improve the lives of the students, and, and not address every need that we have. So the, each one has flaws, regardless of, even the 2K through 61, it has flaws. So I do not want to get into a situation where we're letting perfect be the enemy of good, where someone says, I like nine things on that list, but I don't get 100%, so I'm not going to support it. Or, I'm not going to vote for it because you didn't give me what I want, and therefore, I'm going to just spite the schools, and you're not going to give us all the cuts back? Well, then I'm not going to give you any more money. That doesn't solve an issue, that doesn't give them the cuts back, that makes more cuts in the future. So, I mean, people are entitled to their opinions, of course, and they can vote their conscience, of course, but I am in the camp that we need to pass one of these options out here tonight and start improving the lives of the students in this district. Quit kicking the can down the road. We did the scientific survey for a reason, because there are over 20,000 residents in Avon Lake. And I appreciate that we all go out, Kendra and you, and me, and Gail and Jim, and solicit input from our friends, our neighbors, and make ourselves available for everyone that wants to talk to us. But even if 2,000 people came up to me to give me their opinion, which I can tell you, I have not had, been approached by 2,000 people, that is 10% of the total community. So with all due respect, when your neighbors are talking to you, that's what they want. That's not what the, we don't know what the community wants until we put something on the ballot. We know they don't want the big option, everything at one time. We know they want it to be done in phases. So this is what we, we're now presented with, is we are doing it in phases. So I, I think the option of doing nothing and just waiting another year is not an option. And yes, all three of these options have flaws, but, but we need to start improving the lives of the students and, and in this district. And so I'm for voting for one of these three options to get through tonight. And yes, the community, or that, that one scientifically done survey, which, you know, is statistically relevant, of, of truly representative of what the community wanted. They want it done in phases, and of the options of new construction, the five through eight building was the one most wanted. And yes, you can say, well, you shouldn't just vote for it because you want your kids to go there. I can't tell people all to vote, but inherently, if they're going to pay for it, they want to benefit from it. And so I think the five through eight option benefits the most students in this district, not only today, but then in the future. And also, option one is the least expensive one. We have 65 to 70% of this community do not have kids in our, in our schools. So, you know, and we, we've been hearing from those folks, and we heard from some of them last week, I'm on a tight income, I'm on a tight budget, I want to support the schools. Well, I think option one gives them an option to support the schools and try to fit it in to their budgets as well, because it is the least expensive option that we've ever put up to date to this community, at, you know, to address these needs of, of the, of the students.
And it's also solidifying the fact that we will not address building any new elementary schools in the near future, just to let the public know that, that it will not be an option.
We have, we have bonds rolling off, Automobile will tell us when the next, right, it's not going to be the next three years, but we have bonds that will roll off seven to 10 years from now, right? Or?
So we only have, after all of this debt expires, we have somewhere in the, it's, it's less than $4 million in remaining debt on, on things we're paying for currently.
Okay, okay, so.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But if we're pouring all that money into those elementary buildings for a new HVAC, you're not going to build a new building if you're going to take care of all the plumbing and HVAC and electrical. You're not going to, the community is not going to want to then tear that building down and build new, because we've put all that money into it already. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
But you're also missing the, the, the point that we've been hearing going back five years at this, is the community likes multiple buildings. They like community schools. They wanted us to save all four if we could, and rebuild all four if we could, if we had this, we didn't have the debt capacity as a community to do that, or the space. So we had to get it down to two. You're assuming the community wants two elementaries, and I would bet, there's a lot that still want three elementaries, if not four. And the fact that you say we can't address that and get it down to one or two elementaries in the future, that may be a positive for a lot of people in this community, because they say we lock in our community schools for longer.
My only comment is, I, I definitely am in the camp that we, I want to move forward with one of these options. I think the, I mean, there's just been this cloud of uncertainty over our staff and, and our, everyone affiliated with the district in what direction we're going. We have spent a lot of time to reduce all these options to, I mean, options one and two are like 60% less than what we did, asked for last time. And as far as a comment about bringing stuff back, there's a reason why we're not bringing stuff back, it's because some of the stuff that, some of it is enrollment drop, which has led, led to some of the reductions, and some of it is because we can't ask the public for the same level of operating levy in the past. We, we, we know that it failed, so we're trying to bridge that gap between asking for some revenue, but also making cuts to show that we're, we're being the public partway who thinks that we need to make that number up through cuts. So, you know, I, I think there's merits in all the solutions, but I, I can't justify not moving forward with one of these options tonight, so. So with that, Kendra, do you have anything to say? You don't, I'm not, you're not.
I don't have anything productive to say.
Okay. All right, so as from a logistical standpoint here, we're going to go through these resolutions. So, option B, which is the $88 million bond issue, which represents the building the five through eight and upgrading the elementaries, that's the first issue before us. So could I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
No.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so item C, which is the $3 million a year emergency tax levy, to go along with that, I have a motion to approve that $3 million emergency tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
No.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So next, we'll move to item D, which is the resolution for the two elementaries. Can I have a motion to move that forward?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
No.
Mrs. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Stobie?
No.
Motion is defeated.
And the corresponding $2.5 million emergency tax levy, I have a motion to approve that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Sherbin?
No.
Mr. Stobie?
No.
Motion is defeated.
And then finally, the resolution for the $8 million emergency tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
No.
Mrs. Gardner?
No.
Mrs. Opaskar?
No.
Mr. Stobie?
No.
Motion is defeated.
All right. So we will move forward with the resolutions for the five through eight building and the $3 million emergency tax levy. And Autumn, when do you have to have those filed, or what's your process for that?
So, what I will do, they have to be, everything has to be filed, because we have to have the states, the, the state consent, we have to have that second resolution filed by January 28th. So I will have all of this to the county auditors and to, to the state by then.
All right. Next, we'll move on to some of our normal business for the meeting. We had improvement, approval of the minutes from the December 17th meeting, the January 6th organizational meeting, and the January 6th special board meeting. Does anybody have issues with any of those minutes?
I do need a separate.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve the December 17th minutes?
So moved.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have approval to approve the organizational minutes from the January 6th meeting?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And can I have an approval for the minutes of the regular meeting on January, or the special meeting on January 6th?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next, we'll move on to the treasurer's consent items.
Thank you. I would appreciate if the board would consider these items for approval. We have our regular monthly reports, there are no advances, return of advances, or transfers. We do have an, in a, an amendment to our appropriations, as well as our then and now purchase orders. Also included in the treasurer's consent items for tonight will be to set the amount for all-day kindergarten for the 25, 26 school year, and full cost of tuition would be $6,280. There would be a sliding scale for students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. Free families would get a 75% discount off of that payment, or a reduced rate, and then for those families who qualify for reduced, they would get a 50% reduced payment. And then also included in the consent agenda as well is our leaps tuition for the 25, 26 school year. That tuition would be $3,140, again with the same sliding scale as all-day kindergarten. Also included is College Credit Plus and my university guaranteed memorandum of understanding between Lorain County Community College and the school district. And those are all of my treasurer's consent items.
Any questions?
Is that leaps tuition the same, more?
It is more.
It's, it's currently 2,400.
Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we'll move to super tense consent items.
For your consideration is some classified personnel recommendations, supplemental contracts mostly for spring season, some salary changes due to staff members receiving some additional hours, a leave of absence, unpaid leave of absence, some revisions to previously approved agenda items, just either rate change or a just either a rate change or an effective date change for your consideration. And Mr. Sherbin, you are okay here.
Isn't that so?
Yes.
I appreciate you breaking it up.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the superintendent's consent items B.
So we have a, a sup- separate supplemental contract for consideration for the board where it is a relative of a current board member. So we separated it out so you can take a separate vote on that, but still under the supplemental recommendations for spring.
Can I have a motion to approve the?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We have a couple of discussion action items.
So as you know, we offered a retirement incentive to all staff again earlier this school year. So this is the actual resolution for that retirement incentive plan as well as the staff members who took advantage of that.
Okay. Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the retirement incentive plan?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second item for consideration is the resolution to adopt the special education model policies and procedures, something standard that we, we do every time there's a new adoption. So you can see the mo- the resolution there to adopt those model policies and procedures.
Can I have a motion for, item B, resolution to adopt the special education model?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C for your consideration is a settlement agreement between the district and Mr. Brian Ames.
Can I have a motion to approve that item?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
These are first readings of additions to our policy manuals. And I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion that the board waive the second reading and take a vote on these this evening. Some of these have gone into effect already in terms of, we have a policy here that is talking about our purchasing and bidding. The state has increased the bid amount from $50,000, where something doesn't have to be bid if it's below $50,000, to the $75,000 threshold that went into effect already. As we're going through policy revisions here, as you know, we're switching from OSBA policy to NEOLA policy. These are some things that have already gone through, but yet we don't have a current policy to allow it. So, which is why I'm asking or making a recommendation that you waive the second reading and vote on these this evening. You have an electronic equipment which has to deal, deal with the state making some new laws and parent notification as to when we have to notify parents if we go onto a student device to look at it. We're required in certain situations to give parent notification that we went onto a student's computer within a certain period of time. So that is already gone in place as well, those dates. And then I think some principles of political movements and ideology, something else that the policy 2265, it's protection of individual beliefs, which is a policy that was passed to say that we cannot hire or fire or encourage kids in any way, shape or form on any of our ideologies. And we cannot hire or expect new employees to tell us what those ideologies are prior to hiring. So again, some of these have already gone into effect. So we're playing a little bit of catch up, which is why I'm recommending that you waive the second reading and vote on them this evening.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the first and second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Mrs. Banger, can maybe circle back on the earlier discussion?
So just to cover a couple of things that came up during public comment. At first I want to talk about the TIF conversation. I wish, I wish the gentleman who brought it up would actually stay in here, the, the conversation. Actually had a meeting today, earlier this afternoon, with our attorney and six members of the team from Allerg regarding the property at the power plant. They did talk about the pre-development agreement that was entered in with the city. We expressed our concern about what that pre-agreement said. And it's exactly what the gentleman stated, that, you know, the city will support, you know, a 30-year, 100% TIF on that property. We, we very politically correctly told them that, you know, it was a little bit presumptuous for them to enter in that agreement, never having a conversation with the school districts for the entire time that I've been here. That is the first conversation that, that they've engaged with. They do not have a developer yet. They are eager to try to get some of these preconditioned things in to present to a couple of potential developers, but they do not have one yet. We, they wanted us to come to the table with what I, what we wanted. And our attorney very clearly pointed out that that's not necessarily how that works. You have to come to us to offer something, you know, in advance. And they pushed back and said, we'll get you some numbers and we'll get you something to consider. So right now, there has been no offer. We don't know what that looks like. We told them that we were not in support of a 30-year, 100% TIF at all, that they need to come with something else for us to consider, but that, that it was presumptuous for them to put that in a, in a pre-development agreement without ever having a conversation with the schools. So a little bit of disappointment. It sounds like the, the TIF is, is needed, not so much for the infrastructure that is being planned to be built on that property, but more so to, to provide the infrastructure so that they can build something on that property. So right now, they were explaining that that property was not, does not have plumbing on it. It does not have certain, it doesn't have any roads on it. So the TIF that they're looking for would actually pay to put those roads in and put in the utilities and to pay for the plumbing on that property. So really looking at, it's more of something that our city is needing more so than the actual developer itself was the takeaway from the meeting this afternoon.
Did they mention, because I, I've heard this before and Mr. Phillips brought it up as well. So are they then only going to use TIF money for that? Or are they still earmarking 15 million for some park that's right next to a park?
So the park is actually what the city has put into it. And the TIF, the TIF money is, I think it's closer to $30,000 or $30 million that they would be using to purchase that park. So he was right when he was talking about the money being taken from us to have the city be able to purchase the park in addition to putting in the roads and the plumbing and all the infrastructure that would be needed to support any building that would take place on that property. So they are supposed to get us something here within the next couple of weeks for us to consider and certainly will present it to you if and when we have something to consider. But right now, I think they were on a different page expecting us to come to the table. I said it's pretty hard to come to the table with something. I don't even know what you're talking about because we haven't seen any development project or what it's even going to look like. So that's where it stands. It was about an hour meeting today with six of six people. Yeah, so it was introductory and cordial, but to be continued.
Is there, was there any discussion on timelines like?
Well, I, I let them know that their timing was not ideal. I said, you know, we, I explained in detail our financial situation as a district and what we're going through. And so, you know, to, to ask us to defer money from, from the school district when we're asking our taxpayers for additional funds to be able to run our district, the timing is awful and that there would be no consideration of anything until after we see if our board decides to put something on the ballot in May, that we would even engage in another conversation until after that because there's no point in doing it right now.
I know in the past, and I, I don't think we can do this now because the law has changed, I believe. But when developers would come and ask for tax abatements, we would get payments in lieu of, so we would, we would recapture a portion of what we were going to miss out on because they would just make a donation or I forget how the payment, but I, I think the law has changed for that. But with the TIF, are they, you know, I hear, well, they want this money for a park or for roads or whatever. But does any of that money go to the schools? And if not, why in the world would we vote for any of it?
It's more of, they need, they need money upfront now, but what, what could it look like long-term for the school? So yet in tax abatements, you could ask for something in lieu of a tax abatement. So if they want to do a tax abatement for 30 years, you can say, and I think we have one with Cough right now, where we receive a check every year for a certain amount of money. It's nowhere near what we should have, but it's something in lieu of. With the TIF, with the, it's a little bit different in that you could look at just upfront, but you could also look at long-term. Like what do you want to see long-term? And if they're doing the project in phases, which based on what I saw today, it looks like they are doing it in phases. They have different areas that are looking at rezoning for certain use, that there would be an opportunity to look at a long-term set income if they want in, in lieu of what they're asking for. So there's, again, a lot of options. We can be very creative, but we need to know what, where their starting point is.
Yeah, and I, I would be, I think there's a meeting next Tuesday on the 28th at the lake house. I was, I was invited to, to, I don't know anyone else. I think Kendra was invited as well. But I'd be interested to hear if they plan on putting any sort of housing or apartments which would tax our schools and asking us, well, forego revenue, but we're going to add more kids to your schools and tax you, your costs more basically, or burden us more with additional costs and not giving us revenue. Again, I think the city is going to be barking up the wrong tree.
Second, the biometrics that was being used at the high school that was rolled out, you know, again, in full transparency and being honest about this. We put the information out. Our team, for whatever reason, didn't wait for the opt-out period in time to see what parents were going to opt out and started doing the screenings ahead of time. And we stopped it as soon as Dr. DB and I found out about it. We said, you got to stop that. You gave an out, an opt-out period. You've got to honor the opt-out period for our parents to make that decision. But I want to be clear, it's being called biometrics and I, and it's not a system, it's a system that Avon has used since 2020. Westlake uses it. They have not had any incidents with the system. From my understanding, when this came about, it does screen a student's fingerprint. We're using it for attendance purposes. But once the fingerprint is screened, it turns it into a, a, a number. So it doesn't save the actual print. It's the, you take the print, it turns it into a number. And so then when the kids come back and scan, they're looking for the number that is associated with that. So we're not saving prints. You know, we, we apologize to those parents who were not given that full window to opt out and understand the, the system in general. You know, we've encouraged parents to reach out to Avon and Westlake and some other schools that have been using it for, for a few years now. Without incident, it's been a pretty good system for them. But we, we did. We should have waited until that opt-out period before we started scanning kids. And I know that we've talked to some parents who said afterwards, I want my kid opted, opted out. And we are making sure and ensuring that all of that information then is not being used as part of the system. So we own that and we apologize that that happened ahead of time.
My, my understanding, you know, my wife teaches in Westlake and like, as you said, they, they use this. The whole point of the system, I mean, first, you're right. When, when they swipe their fingerprint, it's not their fingerprint. It's generating a binary code number, basically. And it's a number that saves, not any biometric data of the student themselves. Also, it's, this whole system is put in place and schools use that in other districts and here as well. It's a safety issue as well as it, it, it gives us a more accurate count or attendance policy of who's here and who's not. Instead of relying on, you know, a staff, a secretary or someone who, who they can circumvent or, or someone else will sign me in when it's not them. It's their friend that they have, just sign them in. And so that, that student is actually not in the school. You can't do that with, with the fingerprints swipe system. And, and because it doesn't save any personally identifiable information, if you will, of, of the student online. I mean, I think the phones that we all carry today probably captures 10,000 times the biometric data and location data and everything that every student walks around with nowadays. A binary code based on a, that's calculated based on a, a fingerprint,